I call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickapoo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Lexie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cora?
Yeah.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Hama?
Yeah.
Mayor Knapper?
Here.
Councilmember Maddox?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Yeah.
Mayor, for him is present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the April ninth, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting minutes?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven, please.
Resolution twenty-four sixteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, declaring the results of the general election for mayor and for propositions J and S, held on Tuesday, April second, two thousand twenty-four, as official.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hama?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cora?
Yes.
Item number eight?
Oh, uh, Resolution twenty-four dash seventeen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, thanking the Kyron Knapper for her three years of service as mayor of the City of Maplewood.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second?
Do you want to read it?
Sure.
What it says on my cheat sheet?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, very thanking Mayor Knapper for her three years of service as mayor of the City of Maplewood. Whereas an economy of Knapper was sworn in, mayor capable, we told them. And whereas an economy of demonstration demonstrated devotion to the community, commitment to service, dedication to the welfare of the citizens. And whereas the mayonnaise led the establishment of Human Services Commission and the Maplewood Unity Group, championed the creation of a social services coordinated position. Got involved with the local Maplewood plan, initiated the elder resource fair and affordable housing support. Represented the city of Maplewood and its residents at a White House convening and encouraged legislation to protect and support marginalized populations and expand housing affordability. And whereas the city of Maplewood has continued to improve top third of the town's tenure. And whereas the Maplewood unity benefited from loyal and exceptional services under the power. Now therefore, give resolve by the City Council, City of Maplewood's citizens. The County Knapper is here by honor, permitted, thanks for the bringers of service, speaking before this matter. And if any further resolve, does the City Council express its appreciation to the County Knapper for her legacy of service, the mayonnaise, which is in well, that is.
I know. That was nice. Any discussion?
Oh, I should have words. I don't have words. I'll just say, here, here, thank you. It's been a pleasure sitting next to you. And thank you for dragging me into this.
Thank you. So I have words. I want to move.
Those are beautiful words, thank God.
So I was, I was, uh, telling my supervisor. For, for those of you that don't know, I am an administrative judge, a federal administrative judge for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And I was talking to my supervisor today and I was telling her that, um, this is the first position that I've had where I have been able to show what type of leader I am. Because although I am a federal administrative judge, it's not a leadership position. And so in the three years that I have served our community, I have learned how to collaborate, I have learned how to listen. I have learned how to be determined in the face of adversity. I have learned how to listen to folks that are very disrespectful and still be kind. I have learned that it's better to work across city lines and to work in a regional capacity and not in a silo. And I will tell you that I went to Hillstone University for a panel discussion a few weeks ago and a gentleman came up to me and told me that Maplewood was a fabulous example for the region, the region. And he thanked him for the work that we were doing. So I thank you all. Because as you all know, on my, my colleagues in council, I can't do anything without three of y'all. And I'm blessed, I, I was blessed to have many, many more than three on the work that we did. All right, I'm, I'm going through. So I'm looking at the corner of the room here. Because I have to give a shout out to some of my favorite people. Um, so I'll start with Chief Pete. He doesn't like me to call him chief. He likes just to be called Pete, but Chief Morsec, thank you. Thank you for being a kind and genuine human being. Thank you for being a caring human being. I was able to get to know you through all of the community projects that we would do. So if you were going to have the, um, Elder Resource Fair, you were there to help us. You were going to have June 10th, you were there to help us and you have fabulous ideas. Thank you for loving Maplewood as much as you do and thank you for working with me. Mr. Wilcox, thank you for being brilliant at raising funds to help the community. I will be reaching out to you because I have a plan to raise funds for families to get a guaranteed basic income. So my work will not end, even though I will not be mayor. Uh, so please be ready for when so possible, and maybe with a bunch of questions, but thank you. Chief Nyber. Y'all, Chief Nyber, I told him that I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to share this with you all. Chief Nyber has more integrity than i- in his pinky finger than anyone I've ever met. It was a difficult time when we received the surprise resignation from the previous city manager. And Chief Nyber stepped up when we asked him to. And he could have said no, but he didn't. And then we told him, it'll be six weeks. It was not six weeks. They continued to tell us, I will stay as long as you need. You three are a big reason why Maplewood is as wonderful a community as it is. Because you step up and you give even when you don't have it. So thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you. I'm gonna go down there. I'm gonna go down this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna save you for that. I'm gonna save you for, for last, Matt. No, I'm gonna start with Nick. So Nick, thank you because Nick and I met on ETO for the E C C. So he's been doing his work for a little bit. And I asked him if he would consider running for council. Because I'm, I know Nick to be very practical, pragmatic, very purposeful, and he cares about our community and he really cares about children. It has been a pleasure to work with you. It has been a pleasure to talk about community courts with you and I hope that you will see that through. Sean? I don't know what to say. Sean has pulled me back from many alleged, many a time. You are a wonderful council and you have really become a friend to me. Thank you for all of the wisdom that you've given to me over these three years. Thank you for listening. Thank you for being a good example of a leader. I appreciate you. Chastity, we didn't get to work together very long, but I know that you will do great things and I look forward to seeing what those things are. Eric, what's up, buddy? So Eric and I met, you boys slants. And it's amazing how different we are on some subjects. Yeah, it's amazing. And I will tell you that although we disagree on some subjects, I always appreciated this ability that you provided to me when we were disagreeing. Yeah. Um, I appreciate you being a sounding board. I appreciate you making time to talk with me during the day when I know you're busy. Thank you for being you and caring about our community. Krista? So the first time that I, I met Krista was right there. And I was like, Krista, all I ask is that you talk to me. I don't bite. And as long as you're not a Mantrarian candidate, then we'll be fine. And we have been fine. Um, I appreciate the funny text messages and memes that you send me. They have lifted my spirit, especially through some dark times. Thank you for laughs. Thank you for coming for our community. Thank you for being a part of Maplewood and being, um, being called it by my name. To be a part of council. I met. I'm taking a drink of water. I had to get a So Matt, I, I saved you for last because when you came on council, you and I did not like each other. And I don't know if that's like public knowledge, but like it, it'll be public knowledge today. Matt did not like me. I did not like Matt. And, and it had nothing to do with anything that we have ever said to each other. We've never spoken to each other before. But it was because other people were telling us things and that caused us to dislike each other. I am so thankful that you cared more about children having access to parks for free than that dislike that you had for me, that you pushed through to talk to me. And after we started talking, it was, it was the end. You have been an extremely good friend to me. On this dais and off, I appreciate you. Words cannot express how much I appreciate you. I appreciate the work that you have done for our community to ensure that we have affordable housing. How, when you get frustrated, you find solutions in creating more ordinances to help our community. You are a good human being. Thank you. So it's been a pleasure, y'all. It's been a pleasure. Three years. Honestly, it felt like it went by a bit slow. Especially twenty-six. But we're here and I think at the end of the day, we all care about Maplewood. We may want to see it progress in a different way, but we all care. So I thank you for that. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Thank you for the opportunity to be your leader. And I look forward to the next leader and what he will do for the city. Last but not least. Oh yes, she's telling me no. You can't tell me what to do. I'm not done, man. City manager with the comb. I really need you to stop coming in here on Sundays and working so much, okay? For real. Yeah, yeah. Look at your husband giving you the look. No, it's a season, kinda. Thank you, because I know that you're sacrificing a lot. Take care of yourself. Take care of your mental health. Please don't pour so much, don't pour so much that your cup is empty, okay? All right. Love you too. Any further discussion? Any roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hama?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Cora?
Yes.
Councilmember Falken?
Yes.
Oh. That's all I have. Oh. Sorry, you were a little less.
I'm still here, but
Sorry. So maybe it's new verse.
Yes.
Sorry.
You're fine. That's how you go out, man. No, no, it's all good. May I have a motion to recess?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. For the last time, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are on this. Yeah, yeah. For those joining us on Zoom, the Zoom will continue. I'm sorry? Okay, for those joining us on, um, Zoom, after the swearing in, the Zoom will continue during the reception.
Your turn, Barry.
Hey, your honor. Did you have to be? I, Barry Greenberg.
I, Barry Greenberg.
Being duly sworn on my oath.
Being duly sworn on my oath.
State that I possess all of the qualifications for the office of mayor of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
State that I possess all the qualifications for the office of mayor of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
And that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The statutes of the state of Missouri.
The statutes of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Maplewood.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Maplewood.
And that I will demean myself while in the office of mayor of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
And I will demean myself while in the office of mayor of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For a newly, uh, Greenberg.
I'd like to call it a word, the remainder of the meeting for today. And the first order of business is to decide on number thirteen, the approval of the council agenda. We have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second, we have a motion, second, any discussion? Voice vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have it.
Okay. I'll do that next.
Sorry. I'm just
Things have changed since last night. So, uh, item number fourteen is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by the city to amend chapter thirty-four offenses, article, uh, six, offenses against public peace, section thirty-four dash one seventy-one, hate offenses of the Maplewood Code of Ordinance. This is a public hearing, so if you would like to speak, please come up to the podium, uh, state your name and address and keep the microphone button pressed down so we can hear you. Is there anyone that like, would like to speak on this topic?
Yes, my name's Elizabeth Nathanson. I live at seventy-three eighty-seven Flora. And I think this is very important that we pass these against the hate crimes because you see more and more every day against everybody and anybody. Doesn't matter what color, your skin is, religion, or anything. You see it constantly. So it's very important that we move this forward.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, well, in that case, we'll move on to item number fifteen, uh, which is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by the city to amend chapter two, administration, article five, revenue and finance division two procurement regulations, section thirty-two dash two eighty-seven, formal competitive bidding, chapter forty-two, street sidewalks and other public places, article three, improvement, section forty-two dash sixty-one, contract for improvement, et cetera. Generally, chapter forty-two, streets and sidewalks and other public places, article five, sidewalks, section forty-two dash one twenty-eight, same bids estimates, chapter forty-two, streets, sidewalks and other public places, article six, special assessments, section forty-two dash one fifty-two, resolution and publication required of the Maplewood Code of Ordinance. So, that being said, first of all, does anyone understand that? Uh, would anyone like to speak on this particular topic? Okay, uh, not hearing, uh, any, any comment. I wanted to explain, uh, let's, let's move on to the next one, the, uh, public forum. Uh, if you want to address the council on any issue, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address and, uh, uh, press the button down for the microphone to hold it. Is there anyone that would like to speak first, public forum? Uh, we're moving right along. Okay, uh, are there any?
Do you have any Zoom hands?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we didn't have Zoom back then.
Just making sure that the folks at home can reach us if they needed to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, are there any announcements?
Yeah, we have a couple of things going on. So we're hitting summertime, which means all sorts of good things happen in Maplewood and we should all enjoy them. So Spring Fest, Friday, May third. Tons of transportation is on May fourth. That's a really fun event with, we've got families where they can see, you know, giant equipment who doesn't like things like that. And then, um, I'm really excited, Taste of Maplewood, May seventeenth and eighteenth. It's always worth going to. It's a great event. And, uh, Bummas Market, that starts up in May. It's on Wednesdays, open in the living room and it's definitely worth going to.
And also, there's a deadline for application for boards and commissions of, uh, if the, that process is open until May sixth. And then, uh, decisions will be made, I believe, on, by the eighteenth. Is that correct? Uh, anyway, but if you're interested in serving on a boarder commission, uh, please, uh, apply. Uh, we have a, a process on the website and, uh, I urge everyone to get involved. Uh, are there any other announcements? Okay, item number eighteen is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Douglas Seidel as municipal judge and Jeffrey Hawke and Stephen O'Brien as provisional municipal judges of the Associated Circuit Court Municipal Division of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Do we have a second?
Second?
Uh, is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. We changed judges with the former mayor, made sure that we got resumes for who she wanted as judge. So we could review them and then have them come to a council meeting to, to express why they wanted to be a judge in the City of Maplewood and to ask any other questions. I think that, I mean, I know who these three gentlemen are, but I don't think the rest of our council does. So I think, I think what we should do in light of our judiciary being a bit of a, uh, liability at times, uh, we should probably table this, get their resumes and then have them come to the next council meeting so we can ask them questions. And they can, you know, kind of give their spiel about why they want to be judge.
Okay, uh, will that have any bearing on court dates? Do we know that, uh, what I don't want to have happen is, uh, I guess in move of, uh, of, uh, sort of appointing Mr. Seidel is, you know, the question is, and I'll ask Jackie, I guess, here. So if, if we delay this?
I'm looking to see when the next court meeting is.
Okay.
There is a meeting on the thirteenth.
And if we table this now, who will be presiding over that meeting?
Um, I would think it would be the current judge if she's willing to, well, I say current, but, uh, if she's willing to do it.
Why don't we ask her? Because I, I do think it's imperative that, that we have a discussion about it before.
Yeah, I, I don't know much to Sean's. I, I don't, I'm sure they're qualified guys. I don't know them. Um, and I think, given the judiciary issues we've had in the last several years, I, I'd just like to know a little bit more if we can, if we can go slow.
Yeah, uh, and I would, Mr. Seidel, I'm a straight behind. That's that was an expert witness for them, um, as they've got three cases in San Luis County. And I, I think we'd be happy to support them, but I, I would like to be able to have a dialogue with them and learn why they're interested in serving, why you're interested in appointing them. I think if we can have a discussion, we can all get behind that. So that, I would agree with Sean.
So, uh, how do we want to handle that then?
Well, why don't we just move, uh, motion to table until, mo- motion to table this resolution until the next council meeting?
And then we had a discussion. In the meantime, we would provide necessary information.
Right, and then, then, and then council meeting, we can have a place for them on the, on the, on the agenda if they want to ask questions.
Yeah, they are here tonight. We can't ask questions, but I understand, you know, that you have an aptitude to review. And would you be available at the next, uh, council meeting?
I would be available.
Make some.
What is it?
That's a two thing, babe.
I would be available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, uh, we have a motion to table, uh.
I would suggest making a motion to continue so that we don't have to bring it off the table. If you move it, if you continue it, it will be on the agenda. If you put it, if you table it, it also has to be
Okay, motion to continue the resolution. Second?
Do we have a motion to second? We have had any further discussion?
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hama?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Cora?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Manburg?
Yes.
Uh, the next item is the, item nineteen, is the election of deputy mayor. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I, uh, motion to nominate Sean Falkingham as deputy mayor.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Manburg, don't fix it.
Thanks for, thanks, thank Sean. Thanks for staying on.
And any other comments for the newbie here?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, roll call vote, please. I'm sorry.
This is a
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the election has been completed and Sean is our deputy mayor. Continuing the Continuing that, well, thank you. Uh, item number twenty is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri approving a street vacation plan for the easternmost portion of Bartle Avenue.
Motion to approve the ordinance? Second.
Any discussion? I thought that the information provided was pretty, uh, pretty complete. And, uh, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, second reading, uh, in ordinance of the city, of the city count, in ordinance of the city of council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, approving a street vacation plan for the easternmost portion of Bartle Avenue. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance? Second.
Second, we have a motion, discussion, uh, and, and second is, is there any discussion in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The, uh, motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next council meeting. Item number twenty-one is bill sixty-two forty-nine in ordinance to the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinance's chapter thirty-four offenses, article six offenses against public peace, section thirty-four dash one seventy-one hate offenses to add stealing.
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this one?
I'm very glad that we're adding it. I think it's an important thing to do.
And firstly, I appreciate the fact that, you know, this was handled so quickly and, uh, and that I could inherit, uh, a vote on this. So, uh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Hua?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Next item is item number twenty-two, bill sixty-two fifty in ordinance to the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, terminating tax increment finding, fin- financing within the Cambridge Commons redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund, the Cambridge Commons redevelopment, and authorizing certain other actions related, relating there to.
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Yay. Need to get rid of all these tiffs.
And, uh, any, anyone else? Just a bunch of yAs, okay? Um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
And Councilmember Crowe?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item number twenty-three is old business. Is there any old business to discuss? Okay, item number twenty-four is council communication. Council communications. We've got health services, we've got snow cones, and we're the cheapest place to interfere publicly, so. We're seeing everyone there. Uh, any other communications?
I want to say, welcome back, Mayor Greenberg, even though I wasn't here last time you were here. Um, and I'd also just like to address the community. Um, the same community member that we just passed this ordinance for has also experienced more hate crimes, antisemitism recently that's been on the news. If you know who this person is, please reach out to our police force. This is a family in our community with a small child that just wants to live their lives in peace, and their opinions and views and religion and is welcome here, and it needs to stop. So if you know who that person was and you see the news article, please keep that family in your thoughts as they are enduring a, a lot of hate right now in our community, and we're not here for it. So if you know who that person is, again, please reach out. It, it, thank you.
Thank you. And I certainly agree with that sentiment. Uh, any other type of council communications? Okay, next is mayor's report. I had a few things I wanted to mention. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank the, uh, yeah, traditionally at the swearing in ceremony, I thank, uh, my wife for her love and her support. I've done this before, uh, and I'm also honored to have had a portion of my family here previously. Um, my daughter, my son Dan is my family of the kids, Eli and, and Mila. Uh, as far as, you know, uh, the members of the council, uh, know that the one item with regards to the uh, procurement that I read earlier that we had a, a public hearing on was taken off the agenda, and I just wanted to explain why, uh, not only to the members of the council, but to, uh, to the public. You know, the, the first reason was that the reference standards are forty-six pages long, and they refer to the CFR titles twenty-nine and thirty, and those were amended on four nine twenty-four after the original bill was proposed. And I really haven't had time to determine, uh, what revisions were made and how it might affect the city of Maplewood. I assume that they're not going to affect the city of Maplewood, but I need to research that, you know, a little bit more. Uh, the proposed ordinance will, you know, has the possibility of having a negative effect on the city's ability to utilize local contractors and vendors. Uh, the threshold amount of ten thousand dollars is low. Uh, hardly any work can be performed for that amount, which would dictate union participation in almost every project the city takes on. The counting threshold of seventy-five thousand dollars is more realistic, and it still has its drawbacks, but, uh, uh, I think it, it's more in line with what we need to do here. Uh, the council needs staff input, and in this case, I believe that you guys have talked to, uh, uh, Public Works and, uh, but I think, you know, that discussion needs to be continued. There's legitimate concerns with regards to the effect it will have on current city staff, and what scope of work our public employees, uh, Public Works employees would be able to perform. And I want to make sure in the future, any department heads that are affected by any proposed legislation will be consulted prior to the language even being submitted for council, uh, council vote. The final issue is that, uh, a campaign promise I made to Maplewood constituents, namely, on this bill and all future bills, a public hearing if possible will be held prior to the first two readings in order to give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to any council vote on, on the measure. So we will revisit this, however. Uh, it's worthy of, of discussion. Fortunately, we don't have an urgency to, uh, to pass this at this moment uh, due to the lack of pending, uh, procurements, uh, for the city. So we'll have time to discuss it, hopefully we'll come up with a, a solution that everyone can be happy with. So, uh, that concludes the mayor's report. Is there a city attorney's report?
No, you're, uh, no.
Throw us all off. So item number twenty-eight is the second public forum. As you can see, it's been returned to the agenda.
We missed twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, city manager's report, I'm sorry.
I do have a report, although it's brief. Mayor, welcome. Mayor and council, I want to draw your attention to the revised budget review and approval schedule that I prepared for my report. We have added an additional review session so that we can look at the consolidated budget a second time. So you will be receiving the compiled packet by email on the first. We will be meeting consecutively the nights of the seventh, eighth, and ninth of May. Um, then we will be looking at the budget again with your revisions and feedback on May fourteenth at a work session with the first and second reading occurring on May twenty-eighth and the final budget ordinance being read on June eleventh. So we've given ourselves a little bit more time to work on that, and you will see, um, the individual departments budgets that will be discussed on those work session nights. I also wanted to provide an update since we've had a number of constituent questions about our small vehicle share program. Bird scooters essentially are permitted to operate in the city of Maplewood through a shared agreement with Richmond Heights and Clayton. Clayton facilitates the permit on behalf of all three cities. I have provided contact information for Bird in my report so that residents can reach out if scooters are blocking the right of way, any sidewalks, any roadways. Um, the city's request that, um, although these scooters are being tracked by the company itself, the company is also inviting residents to reach out if they notice scooters amiss. Uh, one of the things that the contract with the cities, uh, stipulates is that scooters will not be in a single location for longer than seven days. Again, if you observe clusters of scooters in a location for longer than seven days, please reach out to Bird. Um, they're available at hello@bird.co, and they have a twenty-four hour support line, eight six six two oh five two four four two. This information is also available on the Bird app should you choose to download it.
Are these scooters, are, are they allowed to be used in public sidewalks?
They should not be used on sidewalks.
That, yeah, that was my point. I've received some complaints about bicycles, scooters and, and other, you know, uh, and other, you know, motorized, uh, and private. And people stepping out of storefronts on, on Manchester have been hit or nearly hit, so.
They should not be operated on sidewalks.
And, uh, so is there anything else?
That's it.
Uh, and item number twenty-eight is the second public forum, and, uh, anyone that, uh, after having listened to us, uh, travel on for a while, uh, you know, would like to come to the, the podium and speak about any, uh, any issue? And, uh, you state your name again.
Mine's not an issue. Mine's a public thank you to our Maplewood Fire Department. My name's Elizabeth Nathanson, and I live at seventy-three eighty-seven Flora Avenue. Um, during this past week, we had some heavy winds and they blew power line off my neighbor's house. Maplewood Fire Department sat in front of the house waiting for Amaranth for six hours, making sure nobody would get electrocuted from those lines. So I want to thank them publicly for, for helping and supporting our, our community.
You can thank him, and everyone can thank me after. So, uh, uh, any other items on the public forum tonight? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, thank you. Is there a need to hold a closed session? Uh, item number thirty is adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting of security.